Well, we'll call the East Line Board of Selectmen Special Meeting of February 22, 2021 to order. We're doing this via Zoom. This is a budget meeting. We, I will, I will say the Pledge of Allegiance and you can mouth along with me if you will. You can remain seated, given the proximity of cameras and such, but I bow to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Kevin, that went, that went very well. That was your suggestion. That the Chair does that.
It took 10 years, but I got a good idea.
You came up with one. Write that down, someone. Okay, so first up is a Commission on Aging. Where are you? Kathy Jo, how are you? Do you know how to unmute yourself? It's star six if it doesn't come up readily.
There we go.
Phone. Yeah, there you go. And I think Roseanne is joining the party as well.
I am. Is it really a party?
It's a party. It's always a party. It's always a fun fest. So we haven't necessarily started yet. We just did the Pledge of Allegiance and we're moving on to the first budget, Roseanne. I'm glad you were able to join.
Thank you.
And Mr. Salerno, I know is traveling, but he's on phone. So good. We're, oh, he's not, he's not traveling.
I'm bigger, I got up here.
Okay. Very good. So Kathy, Kathy Jo Wilson is Director of the Senior Center. And I like that Kathy Jo. Senior said I had a bad day today while before we get into your budget, why don't you let the, the Selectmen know what, what the trouble you've gone through today?
Well, we had, we had a good start in that our new vehicle got delivered last week and we're all excited. And then we had a bad start when we went out to start our current vehicles and it sounded like NASCAR out there. And it's because thieves came in the night and removed the catalytic converters from three out of our four vehicles. So, yeah, so that was an all-day affair. But I do want to say thank you very much to Public Works. Kevin and Justin came out and were immediately out there to help. First student contacted them and they said if we needed help, they would be around to help. Contacted the Board of Ed and we're currently borrowing a vehicle from them right now. On the good note, because we're in COVID, we're only, only driving one person at a time. So we could, we could switch to a smaller vehicle and it didn't really affect us. And because we're in COVID, our transportation numbers are down anyway. So it's not as catastrophic as it could have been, although I did have somebody scheduled for their second COVID vaccine tomorrow. So I made arrangements to get that covered because that's very important. But yeah, so.
Well, a tough, tough start to the day. So sorry to hear that. It's a wicked world we live in, I'll tell you. And obviously we'll make some provisions to make sure that those vehicles in the future are under a camera.
How about under a, how about under a garage?
Yeah. Well, we'll see what we can do, but we'll, we'll make sure that they're secured. It's, it's again, it's, it's, didn't expect that to happen, that's for sure.
No, no.
So why don't we jump into your budget? You have, you have.
Well, wait a minute. What is the interest in the catalytic converters? Why would they steal those?
They can, they can bring them to a scrapyard and get money for metals, what I understand from the PD today.
The catalyst metal is very expensive.
My husband just said the catalyst metal is very expensive.
Just, just to weigh in for a second, it's, it's happening everywhere. It actually occurred on the same night the Towne of Groton Senior Center had three buses also that had this happen. It's been really a plague that's been happening over the last month or so throughout New England. So it's, you know, definitely an up and coming issue that, that it's a hot button thing that's happening.
Some places have cages welded on over it so people can't get to it. That's a possibility.
I didn't hear what he said, Mark. What was that?
Some places have cages welded on.
Oh, I see.
In some of the cities, they've been welding along because they've been disappearing. We're welding a cage around it.
Yep, understood.
So we'll, we will react to that and, and secure vehicles. And this won't be, obviously we have a fleet of vehicles. So I don't know if anybody is brazen to, to go into the police lot and start stealing catalytic converters out of police cars. But, but we do have a, a whole fleet of cars. So we'll have to kind of review how we store these things and access to these things. So it's something that we'll, we'll take up on the town side. Okay?
Thanks.
Who would have thought?
Who would have thought? Who would have thought, Roseanne, in all your years, you probably hadn't heard that one?
I haven't.
Mark, there's also three or four vehicles, older police vehicles or old town vehicles at the Public Safety Building as well.
Outside in the back?
Outside on the side.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, so with that said, Kathy Jo, why don't we talk about Senior Center budget?
All right. So if you review my budget, you'll notice there's, oh, here we are. So there's a couple of line items that are up and a bunch that are down for a grand total of being up 5%. But that's mostly driven by my program coordinator and there's a little history behind this. So in October of 2019, my program coordinator left to go to East Hartford Senior Center for a better opportunity. And we did interviews, weren't, didn't, weren't able to come away with an offer at the end of 2019. So 2020, we did interviews right, excuse me, we sent out, we got applications right around February, middle of February, toward the end of February. And started to review them. And then that's when we started sliding into the whole COVID rabbit hole. And it was clear that there was going to be a slowdown. So that person did not get, we didn't hire, we didn't offer, we didn't do anything at that point. And so through October 2019, all the way up until October 2020 is when we hired a new program coordinator. And that's almost a year to the day that we weren't able to hire, we didn't hire somebody. So that's where that line item, which is, it's a Personnel Services 311 where you see the bump. But that's because we, we were without one for over two, over two fiscal years. The other two increases on, it looks, it looks bad, but I have a five and a half percent increase, but it's going from $700 to $739. So that's only a $39 increase. And then I have a 7.69% increase in my maintenance of office equipment. And that's my registration software, which went from 780 to 840. But this is the registrate, previous to this registration software, where we shared the registration software with Park and Rec, which was thousands of dollars, thousands, multiple. This is a great bang for its buck. So, so really what's driving this is just my program coordinator coming on and not having for a year.
And of course, we saved money at that position because we went without for a couple of years. It was, it's not an added position. It's a replacement position. But we forced a gap in there as things were shutting down, et cetera. So we, we budgeted a half a year's worth of program coordinator or whatever the percentage was. But that's, that's, so that's driving that number up, that 311 line. However, really it's a reflection of the savings we enjoyed for, for a little bit while we replaced that. Otherwise, it's a pretty flat budget, other than salary increases which are contractual. Are there any questions?
Well, as this is my ex officio, I'd like to say to Ms. Wilson and the Commission for working hard to try to provide online programs and experiences for the students and also to continuing to help the senior citizens with the Meals on Wheels, which I know have barely benefited a lot of people. So thanks for the good work and hooray for our senior citizens.
And Roseanne, thank you for bringing that up because one of the things I did want to mention to the board is before Kristen left, who was my, my first program coordinator, you know, all of our numbers were trending up. All of our attendance numbers were trending up because we had somebody that specifically, that was their job to, to program for the center. What we were, what we were starting to experience in 1920 is sort of a flattening of attendance numbers because we had really gotten to the point where we were at capacity within our building. So if we wanted to look for increasing attendance numbers, we were going to really have to look at different sites because we just, we were utilizing all the space that we had available. So I did want to mention that to you guys. And then with Candy, who was my new, Candy Hakinen, who's my new program coordinator, she jumped in on October 26 and immediately made an impact, immediately started getting Zoom classes up and running. And I, I'm not going to say that it's a wild success because people take classes on Zoom more for, I think, just to say hello than to, to really get something out of it. Particularly this age group, it's just not something that's, I would say, a great medium. But it's something. And every month, we're trying to add a little bit more on, a little bit more on. And the other thing I wanted to point out is all my program expenses, I'm, I'm funding out of our special revenue fund, trying to keep off the general fund this year because I'm not bringing any revenue in. So I'm trying to really just keep out of the general fund where I can.
Well, also thank you for your foresight in hiring an East Line High School graduate.
Yeah, it's been very, it's been very nice to, to see her connections with people. Yeah. She must have had your influence, Roseanne, because she's very personable.
Mm-hmm, she is.
Great. Are there any other questions on the Commission, Commission on Aging budget? If not, I thank you Kathy for your great work and struggling through this year. We did receive your annual report at our meeting last week in our.
I didn't want to submit it.
And listen, you did the best you can. You're doing the best you can and you'll be ready to engage our seniors one-on-one and in-house when it's appropriate to. And I wish you well.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go.
Go ahead. Have your dinner. I'm about to have mine. Thank you. Next up is 110, the Registars. I see Wendy and I see Mary in the dark.
Well, that's a good place for me.
You look like you're a little comfortable there.
I am.
A little comfortable. The Registars budget, we, we, we see a little bit of a decrease, a significant decrease there, lining up with the prior years because, you know, in, in the current year's budget, we, we were dealing with the presidential elections and primaries and all that went along with that. And we anticipate a budget referendum coming up in the next year, but just municipal elections. So that adjusted some numbers around a little bit and based on their spending history and their trends for this current year. My office, along with Anna, had made an adjustment to their, their, their request. But I'll let you ladies deliver your budget and anything you want to talk about, you're certainly welcome to.
Well, the budget was also adjusted for this year. Current year was because we received subsidies from the state of Connecticut. So that's why this year looks much lower than it really was.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to talk about in your budget to point out to the Selectmen while we, before we ask questions of you?
Yes. So I was just looking over, kind of comparing the adjusted budget from you and Anna. Our total was $99,077. I know that we had, excuse me, we, Mary and I had requested a larger raise just due to the circumstances of the last election and the aftermath. Wanted to spend more time trying to make sure our books were up to date. And that requires more time, more investment. So we'd asked for, I know proposed from your office was $57,377. And we requested just an even $60,000. That actually comes out to under $40 a week for Mary and I individually. I agree with the cut on the election expenses. It's kind of a little misleading to go off the 2020 numbers because normally we would have had a budget referendum in May. We didn't have that due to COVID. So our expenses were lower that year. And then last year in the 2021 fiscal year, we did have a primary, a referendum, and then a presidential election. So that always costs a lot more. So the cuts, the $25,000 for Election Day expenses seems reasonable. I don't foresee a primary this year. Referendum is, you know, that's pretty on par. So we've done a lot to reduce our costs, especially with food. We have a lot of, we purchased a lot of COVID supplies and we have a lot of that stuff on hand. Like Mary said, we got a lot of grants and reimbursements from the state. So even if we still are, you know, under COVID protocols for the referendum in May, it should be good. So the only thing that I would, you know, that ended up cutting 27, 28,000, I'm looking at my numbers, from the budget, amended budget in 2021 to the proposed budget in 2022. So if we went ahead and went with the raise that Mary and I had asked for, it would actually only add about $2,632 for the year, which would just bump our, bump our budget total up to 101,709. And that's pretty much on par with what we normally spend in non-COVID times. And it would still be a decrease from our 2021 budget of $25,105.
Okay. Are there any, thank you. Everything else is pretty straightforward. We, we did move some numbers around on the bottom. And yes, we, we didn't support an initiative to expand some work with the Registars at this point. I have several requests from several different department heads looking for more money for their budget or their departments for admin work for different projects. And yes, we had a, we're trying to keep a lean budget during these economic times. And we know that the Board of Finance is going to be up against it again. So we did decrease that initiative up in the Registars pay line. Everything else seems to be pretty straightforward. And I'm looking for any questions that the Selectmen might.
Sorry.
That's okay. Happens.
I'll mute.
Maybe you won't mute. There you go. Well, whatever. Okay. Are there any questions, Dan, Kevin, Mark, Roseanne, if you're still around? And of course, Mr. DeGale. Any questions on this budget? It's pretty straightforward.
The, I had a question. We received the subsidy during the presidential election. Is that typical during presidential elections that we, we get the subsidy? Or was that just for some other reason, we received it last year?
No, that was for COVID and for additional ballots for the absentee ballots. So that was the only reason why we would not have normally gotten that subsidy, Dan.
Thank you.
While I have you ladies, Wendy, Mary, I'm on a call tomorrow.
We're on it too.
Oh, you're on it with a cost? Is that tomorrow? Yeah. And on, on election possibilities coming up. So I guess we'll see each other's names on the list there. We want to have a budget referendum in May, the third, the third Thursday in May, as per our charter. We've had other referendums already. We've had plenty of elections where people have to go into the building. So our intention is to have that budget referendum. Budget referendums do not allow for us to do absentee ballots, mailed absentee ballots. I believe they can be in-person absentee ballots.
Our charter is only 10 days, right? So we can't get the ballots out.
Seven to 14 days, but people can come into the clerk's office and pick up one if they're not going to be in town and all that. But, and that might come out tomorrow as well. So we'll go maybe fight that. I don't know if we can, it's just the way the calendar falls and the way we set the budget and then go to referendum. I don't know if that will even be a possibility. But we do, we are anxious and intend to have a referendum. And so we will move forward with that. We'll see what the state says about that. That meeting will be interesting. We'll, we'll see you on there. Okay. Are there any more questions for the, for the Registars?
Mark, I have a question for Anna. Are the subsidies included in the $126,000 budget line or is that separate?
Are you talking about in this year's budget, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, so when, when we received the subsidies, we processed them as budget reimbursements. So it just netted the expense and the rev zero.
Okay, all right. So it wasn't added to the budget. It just knocked down the actual expenses.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Mary. You guys were tops. You guys during these elections, during the primary, even during the blessed Public Safety Building referendum, the seventh or eighth one we had, not really. Wonderful. Your crews are great, but it all, it comes from the leadership. So thank you both for, for your stellar work on that.
Our pleasure. Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you both.
Night.
We'll move to the Assessor's Office, I believe. That's Budget 102 right at the beginning. And our able, able-minded, fiercest leader, Diane Vitaleano is here. Fresh off of her report of 2.14 grand list increase. So, you know, we're all patting you on the back on that, although you're not the one who built the Costco or the apartments. But you properly went out there and assessed them and make sure they're paying their fair share. So your budget is a pretty straightforward budget, Diane. It's a lot of labor. We have three people that work in that office. I think most of your labor is tied up with that. Of course, we have some service contracts that traditionally will go up every year. We've been able to successfully hold back a few over the years, but of course, you can't hold them back forever. And I think you can explain that as well. So why don't you let us know what's going on?
Okay, yes. So we do have contracts with Vision Government Solutions, which does our field cards, and with Walsh, which does our admin program, which is the program we connect to the tax collector with. And with Time Bond, that's who does our GIS vending and our, and our maps and updates. So with the GIS vendor, I really cut them way down for years. I, the first year, I eliminated a whole set of Mylar maps, which brought the cost down significantly. The following year, I reduced the paper maps by a whole set of paper maps. And I kind of got that down to bare bones. But what's happened over the last two years is that the number of mapping changes has increased due to a robust real estate market. There's, there's been a lot of growth happening in town, which has resulted in a lot of map changes. And so this year, they did go up $250 for that to cover the increase. So like you said, you know, I, I was able to reduce it a lot in the very beginning, but eventually the, the work catches up. And Walsh also, you know, that's, that's a program that we don't, you know, we need. We did a couple of years back, try and see if there were cost savings available by going to a different vendor. The changeover, we determined at that time wasn't, wasn't really worth it. So those are kind of fixed costs for us. We don't have a lot of leeway with them. I've kind of already cut them down. Originally with Vision, I was able to cut that down, a whole user group and, and save a bunch of money, which we continue to save because if we were up at that other user group, we would still be, you know, paying that additional, you know, $1,500, $2,000 a year. So I was able to, you know, defray those costs quite a bit. So those, those haven't really changed. My miscellaneous supplies, they, that has remained the same. But what's happened is I, I pay for all of the services for, for the motor vehicle pricing, for the DMB to have the NADA price, and they've gone up on those costs. And the, I always set my, my personal property declarations and all of my printing needs to Waterford. And so now with not being able to send those printing needs off to the town of Waterford, it's going to cost me more to have that done. I've tried to offset some of those costs by sharing resources with other towns. So I do share some of the motor vehicle pricing, pricing guides, the construction equipment guide with Old Lime. I also share, I, it used to be that there were two towns that shared in an ad. And now I've gotten it so that we share the ad with three other towns. So there's all four of us sharing this one ad, which is wonderful. So that kind of offsets a few of the expenses that I suffer in the miscellaneous supplies. One difference is a part-time clerical. Last year, I cut that out of the budget. You know, it was a lean budget year and I was, you know, really trying to, you know, trim everything that I could. However, this year is a revaluation year and I've been short-staffed significantly this year. And as a result of that, I really need that additional help. We've put off some projects as, as a result of not having that additional clerical help. And although it's not that many hours, it really is helpful because we're going to be dealing with a lot of extra work from the revaluation. Any questions?
And you have a, and you have a bump in the longevity this year just because you have some tenured staff that is, you know, with longevity, they get paid a little bit, but of course, they come to the table with a lot of knowledge and knowing how things work. So that's, there's an offset there as well. So are there any questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Under the part-time clerical, how, how many hours a week would that be? Let me see.
That, they get paid minimum wage. It's not, it's not that many hours. It's just seasonally.
Okay.
In the past, it's just been in June before the, they go over to the tax collector. And also I've done, I've been able to use some of the hours in December.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not very many hours.
Yeah, I thought the figure was quite low for somebody to be year-round part-time. All right, that clarifies that.
It's just like a couple of hours a day in, in, for a few week period.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, on the professional conventions and conferences, obviously this year you're down. You've only expended 21% of that $2,000 budget line and that could be related to COVID. Do you expect to need all of that?
Actually, we, our education. Actually, we, our education, because of our time schedule, a lot of our education happens in the spring. And we still, as a result of there being limited offerings, we, I know that I'm going to be taking a course through the IAO, which is more expensive actually than some of the others, even though that they're online.
So your spending's not linear over the course of the year, and you expect to spend more between now and the end of this fiscal year, so?
Yes, yes. We don't have time while we're getting ready to do the grand list, to do any education. So the education always happens after our grand list and after the Board of Assessment Appeals in that really short window of time before we then get busy with the tax bills and field work.
Thank you.
What's nice is I think deep in your pack, you might find the list of professional conventions that the assessors go to, and she's actually itemized the list. Of course, we have three people there that also have to be concerned with education, continuing ed, and keeping up to date with all that goes on in that industry. So thank you, Diane, for providing that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Wonderful. You know, the lack of questions doesn't mean we have to put a whole lot of work toward this. It means we've got a lean budget. It means we're kind of holding the line as best we can. And I'll speak for the rest of you. We're looking this stuff over. We've got some veterans on this board too that have seen this thing for several years in a row. And, you know, our department heads do a really good job of providing us the information and the narratives that go along with the budget. So most of our questions, it would be natural, when you look at just a bunch of numbers on a paper and columns, they're also backed up with explanations in the back. So again, thank you, Diane. You did a great job. It's a great budget. And thank your staff for me as well. They've had a great job.
Thank you. I did have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want me to do the Board of Assessment Appeals? I didn't see on the list, but I generally do those as well.
It's not, well, you do have, I don't have my full book in front of me. I just have tonight's agenda. It's only on the agenda. We'll look it over if there are any questions we can ask you offline or can send you an email because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
I think the board will find that it's pretty straightforward. You're in a revale year, so there is some.
Exactly.
There's additional.
Yes.
Admin time, I believe.
There's additional time for the Board of Assessment Appeal members for the administrative, but then also for the Board of Assessment Appeal members.
Right, right, because they get paid.
Because they get paid, right. And if you're a revale year, basically it was estimated based on the 2011 revale expenditure.
Thank you very much, Diane. If anything comes up, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Well done, well done. Our tax collector is the next one up on the list, 103 Tax Collector, I think, right in order. It's nice when that happens. You'll see our, let's see, our tax collector, John is here by phone. John, I see John M. there listed, and you're muted, John. So in order to unmute you, you can look at your phone and hit unmute, maybe, depending on what program you're on. Oh, you just came off unmute.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Testing the microphone. It all works out. That's wonderful. So you'll see a few items that have gone up. The service contract is one that's shared by the assessor's office. So the tax collector's side is also supporting an increase in the fees.
Yes.
It's our fees that we have to pay for all that we do in our tax collection and assessments. The one notable jump is the tax bill printing. We have gone out to print for several years. Last year, we didn't budget to go out to print. However, there was room in the budget for us to move money over to print those tax bills. It's become too cumbersome and frankly, too inefficient to do it in-house. We pay just a little bit more for the professional service that we get. And we get a lot of added value when we send them out by that service. They're grouped properly, they're coded better, and we've had very little or no problems with using this outside vendor. Everything else on this budget is labor-concentrated with.
Most of it, yes.
Increases, and then is that, well, that's it really. John, is there anything I'm missing?
No, but you got the part-time clerical to the assessor, and I'm flat-lined on that. So if she's going to be having that, that would be primarily her office. I used to have a summer intern from a high school, but maybe it's best that, with the way things are right now, that we didn't do that.
Well, some of that was that we put the second person back in the office.
Right.
Hours, that you can kind of get some of that worked on throughout the year.
Sure.
Paul Daigle's term, linear versus having someone come in for just a two-month period and helping you. But you do have your seasons. There's no question about that. And the ladies in your office have been instrumental in us getting through some of the struggles of COVID and offices down in that we were able to cross-train and share. Jess in your office, who's been able to bounce from office to office and help out.
Yeah, they've both done a wonderful job adapting to the changes.
And the selectmen need to know that. We talk a lot about swing people and all that. We do have some built-in swings in the town hall. And again, we're fortunate that your business is a seasonal one. And, you know, even the town clerks, they have their seasons. You also have steady flow, don't get me wrong, but that's been very helpful. But I'll open it up to any questions the selectmen might have. Again, pretty straightforward, cut budget. It's important to us to push these tax bills out to the printing service.
And it gives the taxpayer more time to deal with them too. They come out earlier.
Right, versus two or three people licking envelopes and actually literally mailing them from our desks. They're able to get them out in a day and box them out. So it's better for the taxpayer. And then they're coded differently with either different colors or different codes.
It does help.
Come back to us. We have a service that can identify what type of tax bill it is or something like that.
Right.
Any questions from the selectmen?
I just, I had one.
Sure did.
The, on the outsourcing, the printing of the bills, which I think is a great idea. I was just curious, in the comment, it says it saves on postage. How does that do that? Do you get a little better rate mailing it out using the service or?
Yeah, I think they use a, I don't know, a bulk rate or how they go about it, but they do manage to save a little bit on the mailing.
I see. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Is that $5,100, and maybe if you don't know, Anna might, is that $5,100 figure totally inclusive fee? Does that include the postage and everything else, or do we pay separately?
No, it does not include the postage.
Okay.
Actually, it's the paper, it's the envelopes, both envelopes collating, printing, of course.
Okay. Good, good. Good questions, Dan. Any other que?
Just for clarification, did you say it doesn't include the postage?
No, the town, the town takes care of the postage.
So that comes under the budget?
Yeah, it's not part of the budget, of the tax collector's budget.
I think you'll find that in the first selectman's budget.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Significant figure in the first selectman's budget for all-town hall postage, and that includes that. Any other questions? So we have these pretty simple budgets tonight to tackle. Not all of them are simple, mind you. Thank you, John. You run a good shop over there, and you have a crackerjack staff, so we really.
I know, I appreciate them.
For what you're doing, and how has Ben now, you know, the Board of Selectmen, well, we get one report from you tonight. The Board of Selectmen, we approved the extension of tax collection for the second half of the year. How has that been going?
Pretty good. We were a little behind last year, but they still have about five weeks to go. So that's to be understood. And also, of course, COVID is affecting the finances of some of these people. And so it's making it a little tougher for them.
Right, right. Okay, so, but we got many of them in as well.
Yes, we have over 95% right now with the grant.
95%?
Yes.
And that's behind where we were a year ago.
Yeah, we were about 96% last year.
Okay, so we're talking a 1% difference, which is a lot of money. I get it.
It is.
But we also have five weeks to go to collect it.
Right.
Thank you for that information, John, and I'm glad the people that need to take advantage of that tax deferment payment are able to do that.
I know a lot of people appreciate it.
With our blessing. Thank you.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thanks again, John. Bye to the family.
Sure thing.
Okay, next on the list is building. I don't see our building.
Mark, he had an appointment, and he knew that he would be running a little behind, so hopefully.
Thank you. I was thinking that the very same when I spoke to him shortly earlier. So we'll move that if it's okay with everyone. We'll move that to the end, and hopefully Steve Way can join us later. Okay? So I'll move across, well, it looks like Brookside is up next. Am I right? 134? Our good friends at Brookside Farm Museum Commission. And who is representing tonight? I don't know if we do. So Ben and Mark and somebody here, Jill Lavelle, are not part of that group. So I will, I'll show you that their budget is, couldn't be more flat with the exception of, we rounded some numbers on utilities. I think there was just a little bit of a bump in the utility bill for the electricity for the building. We've all experienced significant electricity bill increases at our homes. This one is just a little bit of a bump. And if it's, I think it's, let me just take a look at the narrative on that. 210. They're expecting an increase from Eversource, and that was that rounded number. If there are any questions, I can take it back to the commission, or if they join in later, we can also, or if they make a presentation. They've been doing some good work over there. The curator, while we haven't spent any money on the curator this year because of what's been going on, they did ask that it stay in their budget for next year. They fully intend to bring the curator back on and continue the work. It might be a different curator, but to continue the work that they've been doing, cataloging their assets and working with the library on that special program that we were already up to date with. They also have made a significant improvement to the front porch. I think that that project was finished, so that's good news. So anything else we can wait until?
Mark, I saw Gary Lakowski today, and that's all he wanted to point out was the curator position, but you've already done that. And he did say that they are all set to do some painting this spring. He wanted that brought out too. That was it.
Wonderful.
I'd also like to add that there's a lot of unpaid community labor that goes on with that commission, as well as many of the commissioners themselves participating in labor that would otherwise be, we would have to bill to the town.
No doubt, no doubt. Very dedicated people, and Gary is trying to find a successor, but he still labors on, pardon the pun. So thank you to that whole commission, especially Gary, who's hanging in there, helping us out. He wrote a very heartfelt letter as I asked him if we could cut back the curator, and he said, "No, no, 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 no. We want progress here." So I kept it in. I kept it in. Next on our list is the historic properties, and I know we have some folks here for that. 139 is the budget. As you can see, we maintained investing in the Samuel Smith House as much as, well, I don't want to, don't need to open up the whole can of worms, but it was a whole thing that we bought the house, and we thought that might be taken care of in a different fashion. We made a commitment last year. We continue to make that commitment. Their ask was a little different than what I delivered at the end, but we're still able to put some money out on the table for them this year and coming up, even with what's going on with the budget and our need to keep it as low as possible. So Ben, are you here for that? And I know Mark Christiansen's here. Are you here for that as well, Mark?
Yeah, I got elected as chairman. I'm really just an acting chairman because I can't do the chairman's job for very long due to my business commitments. But the bulk of what we're doing is, the bulk of the budget is for historic properties is for the Samuel Smith Farmstead. I'll let Ben talk about that directly because he's the president of the Samuel Smith Group. But they've made great progress over there with a lot of do-it-yourself work. And, you know, our budget for things that historic properties will be doing other than the Samuel Smith is relatively small. $1,500 for research and documentation of historic houses. And from 1888 to 1920, $500 for additional documentation of original historic house inventory. I forget who's doing that, but it's a local woman who did it before. Her name escapes me at the moment. And then $1,000 for the website at Samuel Smith, which has been really gaining a lot of attendees at various events that they've held even last year during the pandemic. So I guess with that, I'll let Ben speak about the goings-on at the Samuel Smith Farmstead. As I say, that's the bulk of the money there. Oh, and I would say also that that was a deal that the town had signed with the state of Connecticut, that the town would help to maintain the Samuel Smith Farmstead. They got grant money for that for a period of 20 years. So Ben, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. As Mark said, and I think both Marks really, we're making great progress out there, and it's totally an asset for the citizens of our town and surrounding areas. It's people learning that it's open space. They can come out and just, especially with this, what's going on now, just go out and rest and enjoy it. So we're asking, we've got one end of the house, the east end of the house has to be finished, the exterior. $7,000 for a contractor for the labor and the equipment. We already have the clapboards in hand. We've paid for those before, and painting. Again, so that will complete the exterior siding of the house itself. And then another, we want to start working on the upstairs section, upper level of the barn, so we can use that for demonstrations and for classes and for displays. So $1,000 for that. So it's really, and Mark had already talked about the website for the Farmstead. And with that all being said, we've held it at a zero increase, a flat budget from last year. We've got some good events planned for this year. And in-house labor at no cost to the town has really, really helped us get where we are so far, and will continue in the future.
Wonderful. Are there any questions?
I just want to comment. I'm ex officio for Historic Properties, and I'm very happy to see that attention is being played, paid to the Sam Smith Farmstead, and it's really coming along, and a great asset to the town. So I think we're moving in a good direction over there, so happy to see it.
Just one plug, Mark, if I can, while all the selectmen are here. Our biggest event last year was our Third Annual Revolutionary War Day. It attracted. It attracted hundreds of people with the pandemic we had, and this year it's going to even be bigger and better. The same group of militia will be coming back. And we have another, our first event of the year, another event connected to the Revolutionary War will be advertised and happening also. So we're trying to use this the the stamp date of sixteen eighty-five of the Revolutionary War period and what happened during this era in this section of the state during that time.
Wonderful. I got to meet a whole lot of those. I don't want to call them actors, but reenactors, I guess. I didn't get a chance to see them this year, but the year prior, and I think it's a different troop now. And forgive me for using the wrong terminology. I'm sure I'm stumbling all over, but you know what my intentions are. They're so dedicated to their craft, but so eager to teach and show off and show off. There are their arts and crafts project or their weaponry or whatever they might be doing. It's wonderful, wonderful group of people. As I walked around and got to meet them. But if you haven't driven by, this is a plea to the selectmen once again, and Ben comes in and pleads to me and then I plead to you, but you know, go their events will be publicized as we get into the warmer weathers and weather, and we should make it a point to get out there and support them. But even just doing a drive-by, I was quite impressed. The work that's been done to really just upgrade the look of the house. If we go back when we bought this thing and it was really kind of caving in and all the brown was, you know, all the boards were kind of not in good shape and Ben and his crew, the whole crew, just doing remarkable work and really honestly for very little money. So the commitment this year, we did take a thousand dollars off of the ask. That was to start the purchase of the lumber to replace the second floor of the barn. Maybe we could put that off for another year, or maybe we can find some grant money, or maybe we can find a an angel donor to come in and give you the thousand dollars. But we did increase the thousand dollars under your service contracts to support, I think, that's your website development that has kind of cropped up. And while I, you know, while it just kind of happens, be happy to support it because I think that is probably a good way of keeping in touch with the people that are going to care. They're going to be eventually a good source to reach out and say, hey, where are our angel donors? Where are the people that want to support a house from sixteen eighty-five? So so thank you, thank you.
And I'll just point out one more thing. We started the East Line Giving Garden, had its beginnings over at the Samuel Smith House. And actually, that was in a big way thanks to you, Mark Nickerson, with the Rotary Grant that was involved. You kind of connected some dots there. So thanks for getting that rolling and the the Giving Garden has now expanded. We're still going to have a presence at the Samuel Smith Place, but it's a bigger piece of land behind the Baptist Church on Church Lane. And the Pollinator Pathways, I think, Ben, maybe you know more about this, but the Pollinator Pathways, I think, are going to try to get permission to do something over at the Samuel Smith Property with grant money from Sustainable CT. So we're there's more going on there than we even talked about.
I love the the synergy. Everything's playing off of one another. And I'll take no credit for the Rotary Garden thing, but I did I did say, hey, we've been doing this already. Let's do it, you know, somewhere else. And I'm glad sometimes I I just babble on and on, and sometimes people pick up what I say, and eventually it connects the dots. But there's a lot of great people in Rotary that put that together, and I was not among them because I don't have the green thumb that you might have, Mark, and others. But great. I think the Giving Garden is going to be, you know, the next Boardwalk or the next Miracle League Field. I think it's going to be the next thing, the next notch that we we talk about as a town that, hey, look at us. And it separates us. And it really just kind of, again, I've said this before, the Miracle League, it fills the soul. It's something we're doing for others and like the Miracle League Field. And I think this Giving Garden idea wonderful, and I my my hat's off to the Flanders Baptist Church. Their government, you know, their elders that saw the vision as well. But it's going to take all that dedicate all that dedication. And Mark, I know you're one of them, and I applaud what you're doing. Continue the great work.
Yep, thanks.
I want to keep it open for selectmen to ask any questions. We spent many hours on the Samuel Smith House and Historic Properties over the years. I'm happy that progress is being done and 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 there's a predictability now with that with that budget as well.
Well, thank you to Mark for stepping up and taking on the role of chair, acting chair, and I hope that he will be able to continue to do it for the next two or three months. And it's the volunteer effort is very much appreciated by the by the Board of Selectmen. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Are there any other questions? If not, I thank you all for your attendance tonight and for coming on board. Stephen, are you part of that group?
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge you, Steve. I I'm looking at my agenda, realizing you're not here for any other reason but for this one. So thank you. Thank you, sir. You're muted, but we know, we know, we know there was a you're welcome there somewhere.
Yep.
Okay. God bless you all. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Yep.
Next, next on our agenda is the contingency. Anna, I I haven't let you talk too much during this budget season. I'm going to let you have the rest of the night. How's that? Don't go too long. I'm running out of battery.
So the contingency account has two accounts, one for wages and the other for contingency. So at this point, the contingency is primarily for the UPSEU bargaining unit. However, you do have that item on your agenda later this evening. If that should get approved, then we would disseminate the wages throughout all of the different departments, and we would be able to make a reduction there. Then the operating contingency, we started that at one seventy-five. As you know, we do have, we are moving into the Public Safety Building. While we did make provisions throughout the budget for, you know, to, you know, integrate into the building, we just wanted to have a little extra on hand to be on the safe side. And that's primarily primarily it for contingency. If anyone has any questions.
Yes, Anna, is this one of the accounts that insurance companies look at or bonding companies look at in order to see how much we do have in contingency? I know they look at how much we have in our reserve account, but is this an account that they pay special attention to as well?
They they do look at at it favorably if you if you include funds within within your budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, you know, it's good business to do that no matter what. Even in a regular private industry, you need to have a cushion there because you don't know what's going to come up. I mean, we're we put this budget together eighteen months before, you know, well, not eighteen months, but the year starts in July and goes for another whole year. So technically eighteen months worth of a budget in advance. So of course, things come up. So any questions? We did, you know, we had that Public Safety Building, as you saw last year, and we've taken that out in this current year, and we'll take that out for next year because we'll be in the budget. It will be in the building and our budget will be pretty solid throughout. Knock on wood. And of course, we have some money in contingency for that reason. These budgets are tighter and tighter and tighter. You know, one person getting sick in the department and us having to scramble and put put overtime on for another person. We scramble sometimes, and it's very handy to have that that contingency there because the wheels of government still need to chug along. We can't put certain things off. So I'm glad you recognize that. Any questions on contingency? Anna, you want to walk us through the debt and service fees?
Okay, so we have two departments that with our debt service, five twenty-two, which is for interest, and five twenty-three, which is for the principal payments. So we have various issues that we issued over time. There is, you know, in the narrative, a description of what those issues were actually for. Most of our debt is general obligation bond. We do, we are making payment on a couple of drinking water funds. Those are labeled with the DWSRF. And that was primarily for the regional interconnection project. We do have, we are going to market again in the upcoming fiscal year, and at that time, we will be permanently financing eleven, eleven point four million dollars, which includes a little over eight million. That'll be the final bonding for the elementary schools and two million for the Public Safety Building, half a million for roads. And we are looking at some Board of Education capital improvement items. And there is a fire apparatus out there as well at this point. So that would be the new issues that we're looking at for the upcoming fiscal year. The, as you know, the elementary schools and the Public Safety Building are already approved. Any of the other items that on that list, meaning the roads, the Board of Ed CIP, and the fire apparatus would all have to come, you know, go before the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen for the authorization projects in order of process in order for us to move forward. And that's pretty much it. If anyone has any questions?
I'll tell you, it's 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 a lot of numbers. It's a lot of moving parts. And I'm very, very grateful that this town has someone as stellar as you, Anna, that you've been here long enough to know and understand, but in your expertise, you understand the all the bonding and and all that. And I always feel confident after discussion with you that we're in good hands. Are there any questions? We're bonding eleven million dollars, did you say, this year?
So
Round numbers?
Well, plan was, I believe, eleven million, four hundred and twenty thousand, of which eight million, forty-five thousand is the final portion for the elementary schools. We have two million to permanently bond for the Public Safety Building. And then we have new projects, roadwork, a half a million dollars, a fire apparatus, some Board of Ed CIP items. Those items would all all need to go through the authorization process at some point before when we go to market, which is in July and August.
More of that coming up tonight, actually, on the capital, capital budget as well. Before we move to the capital budget, if there are no other questions, we can go back up to budget one oh four, the Building Department. Steve, thanks for joining us. We knew that you were going to join a little late. We've been kind of plowing through this, so we kind of
Yeah, it looks like it looks like you're almost done.
Time, we we already passed over you twice, but it's not the first time you've been passed over, I'm sure. Steve, before we start, there there was a whole lot of public discussion on the social media platforms about you know, the Public Safety Building and, you know, building inspector's not doing his job, and the fire marshal's not doing it. A lot of defamation of character issues. It's sad, and it kind of breaks my heart that we're still politicizing some of this. The Public Safety Building is going according to plan, probably earlier than planned as far as the schedule goes, on budget or under budget as far as spending goes. And, you know, things are, of course, not in compliance when you're taking a office building and turning it into a fire department or a police department, but that's already been planned for in our in our plan. And I thank you for jumping out there and and defending that a little bit. I
Tried to avoid that, but I couldn't help myself.
We all try to avoid it, the nastiness, but your professionalism, you know, ranks higher than me as a politician just going, well, everyone told me it was okay. You you are, in fact, you know, again.
I'm the last guy that has to sign for it. So, you know, if they're going to tell me it's not in code compliance, that's I sort of take that personally.
Yeah, of course you do. Of course you do. So I and I just wanted the selectmen to hear that. I know there was some chatter about that throughout selectmen and throughout the town hall. And it's, again, it's ridiculous and sad, and I won't spend any more time on it, but thank you for going out there. And again, tonight reassuring us in a public setting that everything is going in your department. Obviously, not everybody, but, you know, you're the building inspector. And everything is going according to what we expected.
That's good.
Thank you.
You're going to have a nice building when it's done.
Thank you. Yeah, we know that. And you were one of the first people to tell me that way back when. So your budget is up a little bit, up a lot a bit. This is one department that we have cut and cut and cut. And meanwhile, the growth has been grow, 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 and we have not kept up. We have a record number of building permits coming into the Building Department. It requires a proper review, not just a rubber stamp. We we we're out in the fields. Steve has a part-time or two part-timers that try to keep up as well, but we also have a significant revenue stream that comes in as a result of this department. And really, the obligation of this town is to cover the costs of the department with the revenue stream. Otherwise, we should reduce our fees. Hear that loud and clear? When it's not supposed to be a revenue stream to go subsidize the fire department. But there are other expenses, you know, that do have to be covered when someone is putting in a permit. And I think we we find a balance there. But so we are asking for help. We're asking for help. And Steve, I'll let you tell tell the select persons the help that you're requesting.
Well, we're asking for a few more hours for inspectors. That's hello and good night to everybody. I can't really see everybody, so I'll just assume you're all there. But we're looking for a few more hours for the building inspectors. And as Mark said, we are dramatically up with inspections since the virus hit. Nobody could have anticipated this. Everybody anticipated the world shutting down. In fact, everybody that stayed home for the last year and decided not to go on vacation, they're putting in fools decks, finishing rec rooms and all that sort of thing. So we have had a tremendous influx in those types of projects. And typically, those types of projects require a little extra handholding as opposed to somebody coming in with a brand-new house typically by a professional builder. We can get out of those, you know, usually with a half a dozen inspections. Somebody finishing a basement, we're doing seven or eight inspections just for finishing a basement because they're trying to do it on weekends and part-time and that sort of thing. So it takes a little bit more out doing remodeling jobs, refurbishing jobs than as opposed to new construction. We always joke in the trades, anybody can build a new house. Refurbishing an old one takes skill. So that's that. And in conjunction with that, we need more clerical help. There's, you know, that many more permits coming in, that many more things need to be filed and so forth. Right now, this past fiscal year, we ranked number seven in the state in new housing units.
Wow.
Number seven. So Stamford, New Haven, Milford, Newark, Fairfield and Greenwich are above us. So, you know, and those are places that are putting out thousands of of new offices. But we're we're ahead of Hartford. We're ahead of many of the other places that you would think would beat us. So but we've had some major projects. We have part of a problem is is that our revenues earned last year call for inspections this year. And in new permits this year, where we're getting revenue, they're going to get inspected next year. There's a lag of about six months typically. And so depending on what time of year we get the revenue in, the actual work that we do for it follows. So whenever this comes to an end, there'll be a tail off where we're still doing a lot of inspections, but little revenue. But right now, we're getting massive revenues and a lot of inspections. I think based on what I see coming for the next fiscal year, we'll drop down from seven, but I think we'll still be in the top ten in new housing units in the state. Pretty dramatic for a relatively small town, but we're one of the few communities travel distance to New York, which is a popular thing these days, that has the property to do it. You know, anything south of us is pretty well developed, so.
Right. Other, other questions from the selectmen? I'll tell you, Anna and I and Steve really quenched numbers here. We really went after this budget to defend it, to, to look at what was needed. Hours, how much an hour costs administrative, administratively or assistant inspectors. The overtime coverage that we need down there when one of the clericals is out and someone else needs to stay longer. We really crunched the numbers and use actual real numbers. So we, we feel like we can defend these numbers as, as well as Steve, of course.
And I also want to point out, just, it doesn't really show on paper, but the clerical staff is also doing all the weapon stuff. The Board of, zoning Board of Appeals, the zoning board, the, you know, though all those other commissions, they're coming out of, out of my budget. And an awful lot of fire marshal work comes out of my budget for the clerical work, for blasting permits and things like that. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's a good.
There's more than just the construction part of it.
Right, right. Any other questions or any questions at all? Again, thank you, Steve. We, we don't give you a whole lot of tools in your toolbox, but you still, you still seem to get the job done. We appreciate that. Steve, your, many towns kind of shut down for a little bit in their building department. Because, you know, we, town halls are shutting down and people were going on furlough and all that.
Oh, yeah.
You, 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 you worked from home without.
Never, never.
And you, 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 you created your own little town hall in your basement or whatever. And you were able to bang out some stuff until we got the town hall opened again.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we did pretty good. You know, we had the girls taking turns coming in and keeping up with paperwork in the office. I, I, I'm set up at home anyway with full computer setup. So I was able to do, you know, the inspection, the plan reviews and that sort of thing. Not so much the inspections as well as we would have liked, but there had to be some compromises. And my, my assistants, who are both on the older side of middle age, were uncomfortable coming in. And, and, you know, I guess I don't blame them. And at a certain point, they became more comfortable. We reopened, they came back and both of them have had their, their first shot anyway. So they're getting more comfortable. So I appreciate them coming back when they did. As a matter of fact, we closed town hall on one of the guy's first day of work. So he was, he was put off for a couple of months. But we, we managed and I think we all, and all did pretty good.
You did very good. Thanks for keeping the midnight oil burning and, and making it happen out there. And so we were able to figure out how to open up town hall safely and get people back to work. So we weren't, you know, there was a period of time where, you know, a third of us were going to get this thing and ten percent of those people are going to die. And I'm looking around county going, well, some of us are going to die. And thankfully, in our small little universe, that didn't happen. We kept people safe and we did, we tried to make the right decisions. So moving on, are there no other questions? We can close this one out tonight. Thank you, Steve, for joining us after your meeting and I appreciate you chasing.
I had the eye exam I had to get done. I got put off twice due to COVID and so.
There's some Hollywood lighting going on there. You get the dark background, you get, your face is properly lit. I must commend you.
Oh, wow.
If you could only find a makeup.
That's the cabin in the back, no lights in the background, that's the key.
You're going to work on your makeup, but other than that. Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Anna, we're going to go raise a capital then. And, and everybody, that's, I think, seven twenty-four. Let me toggle over to that. Say what a toggle. And this is our capital, our capital plan. I think we went over some of this. I know Chief Finkelstein is here. And my guess is I figured out why you're here now, chief. You're here for this because we do have some, some police equipment in, in this budget. We can go over line by line. I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look this over. The CNRE is funded as we often do. A lot of it is the revale. We are putting money inside for the revale. But we also put money in for townwide roofs, kind of a kitty, if you will. The HVAC replacements, a kitty of that fifteen thousand for that, ten thousand for sidewalk repairs. We have a lot of money in there that we'll be investing hopefully this year. Five thousand for townwide servers. We have a police boat engine replacement for eighty-five hundred dollars. And CAD software and survey equipment for four thousand. That is in the CNRE municipal project. And I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions with that specifically. Is this the last payment for the eighty-five hundred dollar police boat?
It, it, it should be. This is, again, to remind people, this is for the East Line and Waterford shared vessel. The engines need to be replaced on that. They have to go out to bid for it. So, you know, unfortunately, at this point, we're believing that this is going to be the cost. However, when the bids come back in, you know, sometime this summer, we'll have a better, better handle on this.
Right, great. Next, thank you, Mike. And please, I'm just, instead of me continuing to ask, just unmute yourself and jump in and, and interrupt me as I go down this list if you have any questions. Let's slow down when we get there. If anyone has any questions, it's five thousand dollars for the Ford Escape vehicle for engineering staff that's using, those are the, these are the final payments coming. Oh, final payments are in twenty-four, twenty-five. It's a vehicle we already own. These are just payments. Line four fifteen is the computer equipment. What we do is we take the oldest equipment in use in town departments and we replace them. We put ten thousand dollars into new, new computers every year. And Carmen Ames, our, our IT person, it has a, does a fantastic job of identifying which computers need to, to be replaced. Next is the parks and rec equipment. We have payments for prior year acquisitions in there. We do have some requested equipment to add in. That would be a pickup truck with a lift gate plow package. It's replacing a two thousand thirteen vehicle. This is a sixty thousand dollar vehicle. And this would be financing the acquisition plan with estimate payment of about twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is a full package. It has the lifts in the back and it has the plow in the front. Our parks and rec people come in just like our public works and they do all the parking lots in town and help us out any way they can during these big storms. And we've had many this year. Niantic Fire Department equipment is sixteen thousand dollars for four sets of turnout gear at four thousand each. Seventy-nine hundred and twenty dollars for the CB, SCBA forty-five minute cylinders at thirteen each, thirteen twenty each. And, and five thousand dollars for replacement of fire hoses. That's in the Capitol Outlays Equipment. And Flanders has four sets of turnout gear for same stuff. A six thousand assorted fire hose, the SCBA forty-five minute cylinder replacements. They take, getting five of those, replacement for the vehicle for the chief. It was already done and we have payments in there for that vehicle that we're paying for. You'll also see the police cruisers on line four sixty-three. The acquisition plan is out there. We, we pay for the, about two vehicles a year. Sometimes it's a little bit more than that with detective cars and chief cars and all that. But as you do know, the police cruisers, all the police vehicles are paid for through a revenue stream that they collect when we do outside overtime projects. So the Niantic Bridge Project, every time you cross that and you saw a cop, a car there and a police officer inside, the state was paying for the police officer. His or her benefits, but also the use of that police car. And that's separated out and that goes into a kitty for them to buy police cruisers. Chief, do you need to add on to that while you're here? You're muted, but you're muted, sir.
How about, how about I start doing that first? I apologize. You know, I think it's worked out very well since we started that several years ago. If you look in your, in the regular operating budget this year, we put the revenues into it. We were at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars received for that, you know, for that service. This year, after seven months, we're at about sixty-six. So we're trending just a little bit below what we had last year, but certainly, you know, well within what's needed to maintain the, the acquisition payments. I think it's obviously been a benefit because it defers from the taxpayers having to fund those vehicles. We're able to do it self-sufficiently and reduce the cost to taxpayers. The other thing we added this, this year, and I want to point this out, is the fuel reimbursement. So not only are we paying for the cruisers, we're also able to assist public works with the fuel while the cars are on those jobs. Unfortunately, you know, for, for years, public works paid for that fuel cost. You know, and we collected thirty-five hundred dollars this past year to defer those fuel costs to the other than time. So, you know, certainly, you know, we're trying to define those revenues and find those ways to reduce and mitigate the, the taxpayers', you know, burden.
Thank you, chief. This is one of the, the list is very long and I'm, you've heard me for years talk about, you know, the value we have, the added value we've done in, in the police department, chief among them. No pun intended, is the chief. You know, we have outstanding chief of police, but with that, that leadership has gone on to do things like this. The burden to the taxpayer on police cars has been there since the town started and it is no longer there. It, it's coming from contractors and many of those contractors are indeed working on state jobs. So therefore it does come, it's, it's state money, so therefore it's taxpayer money. However, this is, it's not tied into our property tax and I think that's very important. We've done a great job of that. Chief did a great job and the police commission identifying, oh my goodness, other towns do it this way, why aren't we doing that? We went out and did that five or six, well, three or four years ago boldly and seen the benefit there. Line four sixty-five, any, any questions on that? I'll stop there. While we have the chief here, we should be, we should take advantage of that for any questions. If not, line four sixty-five is Public Safety Emergency Management. Chief is also the department head there. He, this represents the acquisition payments for vehicle and SCBA equipment. And that equipment is, well, that maturity is, in that loan payment is June of two thousand twenty-five. That's ongoing payments. Fire Marshal's Office, we have a truck that we purchased that we're paying on. In addition, we're asking for eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for Knox Box retooling. Now, we don't have the fire marshal here, but a Knox Box is on outside most public buildings, most commercial buildings in town. Places very much, I don't know about residential apartment buildings and maybe, maybe there too. Do you know that, chief, if they're on?
There are, there are a few. Generally, it is for commercial, you know, establishments. And what that does is allows the fire department, when they're going the off hours, to gain access into the building. The keys are in that box, they're locked securely in there. From dispatch, there's electronic tone that goes over the radio system, unlocks the box inside of the fire apparatus. They take the key from that, open the key box on the side of the building and ultimately be able to get quick access into that building to find out, you know, why that alarm is going off or, or if there were a fire or something else going on to, you know, to get to that.
It's very important. And listen, we have been, just like any lock in your house or if you're moving into a new house or your business, after many key holders have come and gone over the years, you want to change out your locks. It's a safety measure. And frankly, you know, we've had the Knox Box system, the current system, the current keys out there for a whole long time. And it's time for us to upgrade our security measures. And I support this and I hope you will too. We need to retool the Knox Boxes in town. Rekey them, if you will, trying to keep it simple. We need to rekey them. And I've asked the fire marshals, when they're out doing their annual inspections, to actually be able to change it out themselves. A lot of towns, flush with money, would hire a firm to come out and redo this. Two hundred Knox Boxes around town and they would go out in the course of a couple of weeks and change them all out. I'm asking for the Fire Marshal's Office, when they're out inspecting businesses and apartment buildings that they do annually, to go out and change out the Knox Box. So we're going to buy the equipment and over time, replace them. And that's how we're going to get this done and do it in, in an efficient way. Because otherwise, we'd have to wait another year. So we'll be, this will be included in the CIP with CNR funds, as you see there. Public Works Trucks, the vehicles for twenty-one, twenty-two, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars include a trash truck and a dump truck. And acquisition payments of twenty-one, ninety-one thousand dollars. So we are, we will be asking for a trash truck and a dump truck in the Public Works Department. And lastly, the recycling equipment. We stock our inventory of recycling municipal solid waste containers. Our stock includes sixty-four and ninety-six gallon sizes. We charge seventy-five dollars and a hundred and ten dollars for them respectively. We need to go out and build our stock and there's fifteen thousand dollars aside for those. Any questions? Anna, anything to add?
No, you did a fine job.
I, it's my seventh budget, you know? I stumbled through six of them and I finally got it right. I stumbled through this one too. I appreciate your patience. So any other, any questions? Pretty upfront and, and there you go. Again, much, much the same thing you've seen year in and year out. And we try not to disrupt that rhythm. Great. If there's no other questions, we can move on. Chief, thanks for joining us tonight.
No problem.
Much appreciated. Say hi to the family. Okay. Next on our agenda is a follow-up to last meeting where we were in executive session and we had made a commitment not to vote on something. And so this meeting, and we added it on to your agenda this evening, is discuss, discussion of possible action of the UPSU Labor Agreement as discussed. And we had some discussion. I think we're completed with that. We have, we have asked the UPSU Group, which is, I know that's an acronym and that doesn't ring. People might not understand that. That is the union that covers the town hall employees, public works employees, parks and rec employees. I, I think that covers it and maybe some assorted other people in town. But it's our large, all encompassing union. It's, it's the people who aren't covered with the, the unaffiliated, of course. The fire department has their own, the police have their own and the dispatchers have their own. Everybody else is covered under the, all, all, the umbrella union, which is the UPSU Labor Contract. We've asked the UPSU to consider moving ahead one year of labor negotiations and just rolling over their current gross wage increase, which is two point two five percent. You've seen it in your budget under the department heads. They've also agreed to that. We are hoping for your support on this this evening. As we move forward, we are changing nothing else. And that was a little confusion last meeting. So I wanted to go back and verify there's no increase in their health contributions or any other figure. It is simply, let's move ahead, let's move the GWI over one more year. And then we'll, we'll worry about, you know, discussing environmental impact to union contracts after we get past the pandemic. And I think that's proper. And we're at that with every other union in town as well. It take, in my, in my discussions with my, our labor attorney, Nick Grellow, you've met him. He's a, he's the sharpest guy I know. And he's having this same situation in other towns. He represents many other towns against many other uni- union contracts. And that is the case, that most towns, if not all of them, are finding that this isn't the right time to negotiate for either side, frankly. So is there a motion out there, Kevin, that you can put on the table?
Yes, just like you said, move to approve the extension of the East Line UPSU contract as discussed. as presented.
This is Mark Salerno, I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Great. Is there any discussion questions? Ma'am? Roseanne, was there a question there?
No.
Okay, it's just a little background. I just wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? I thank the union leadership for recognizing this, and I and I thank the Board of Selectmen also for their partnership. We have very, very, very good relations with with our employees. They're valued. The work of government mostly is people. It's mostly people. It's people that drive the trucks. It's people that take our tax bill or push out the tax bill. And 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 it's important that we have valued employees, and they I hope they feel valued. I've spent seven years saying that and acting that. And I thank you for your support on that. And we'll move on. It will press on another year. If there's no other business, and this being a special meeting.
I will move to adjourn.
Good.
And it's been seconded. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Thank you all. Been very efficient meeting and very good informative meeting. Thank you all for coming aboard.